Oh, Nick there, I forgot I was going to try to give you control of it before I hit it on Facebook.
That's not a problem. Do you mind hitting record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Where's that button? Oh, there it is. How do I get out of this? It tells me I can't minimize Zoom while I'm recording the meeting, but I have to get back onto Facebook. Okay, Bridget, we're live. It appears on Facebook and here in the Zoom room, so.
Okay.
So whenever you need to begin, you can. Well, I guess you would have to wait two more minutes anyway with the.
Yep, I'm gonna give them a couple of minutes and then we'll start the whole.
We have to do anything to untable 22-3 or is that still on hold?
We'll talk about that committee of the whole.
Okay.
Well, just in case Ben doesn't make it.
He should. I saw him an hour and a half ago. So he said he would be attending by Zoom.
Okay, it's 6:45. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Um, do we have any suspensions this evening? Yes, Mayor. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Um, good. I like hearing myself. I'll give you a minute, Mayor.
Sorry about that. For some reason, the Facebook Live feed unmuted itself, so it was playing on the 10-second delay or whatever it does.
No worries.
I was trying to figure out where it was coming from. Okay, yes, we have several suspensions that we would like to request this evening. I see that we do have enough council members present. The first would be requesting suspension on ordinance 22-26. The reason for that, they're just two donations that were received, one for the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. That was from a grant and the other was a $2,000 grant for the Parks and Recreation Department. As always, we try to utilize grant dollars or donations that the city receives as soon as possible. So that we can show those entities that we're putting their money to good use. The next would be ordinance 22-27. And that's the ordinance, just to appropriate some of the funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act. That we have already discussed with council and we're on the list. The next would be ordinance 22-28. We're requesting suspension that is allowed to allow us to purchase road salt for the year. The reason for that is we're facing a deadline coming up soon. And when we partner with the state of Ohio and ODOT, we receive much better prices for our road salt than if we just go out and buy it separately. So we're asking that to be suspended so that we can meet the state deadline that's approaching at the end of the month. And then last but not least, we would ask for suspension of ordinance 22-29. And that was just, I don't want to call Kathy out. It was not Kathy's fault whatsoever, but there was just the wrong line number was put in the previous ordinance that was passed for these two budgetary items, so they were put in the wrong fund. This just makes the correction to the correct one, so that we're able to actually spend these dollars that were already appropriated. So Kathy's darn near perfect at all times and she actually made a mistake, so we may have to write this down. For once in Kathy's life, she's actually made a mistake. Most of you may not be on council long enough to see a second one.
Thank you, Mayor. Who signs those four ordinances? Who signed 22-26? You signed all four, Steve?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Are you, are you okay with taking that then?
Yeah, I figured three of the four were gonna be suspended anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Brent, do you have anything to discuss? I know you wanted to talk about possibly 22-3.
Yeah, yeah. I've got three items. The first item is under motions, I would ask that you amend ordinance 22-20 by changing the word east to west in the title. Not like Kathy, I make mistakes on a daily basis, and this was one of them. The actual substance down in the body is correct, but I had the wrong direction in the title. And unfortunately, that was caught. And so again, under ordinance, for ordinance 22-20, under motions, I would ask that you amend the title by changing the word east to west. So that's one item that I have for you. Any questions about ordinance 22-20? That's the ordinance to vacate an alley. The next item that I have is you should have a discussion tonight, like you did before, to talk about whether you will hold your next meeting by Zoom or in person. And whatever the consensus is, I would ask that you would entertain a motion, Council President, and second, and a vote, just for clarity to the public, so that they know clearly the method of holding the next council meeting. And that can be done really anytime during the meeting tonight, whenever you choose to do that. The last item that I have is ordinance 22-3, and that is the ordinance that would change the amend certain sections of the income tax code for the city. It would continue the road and bridge levy quarter percent. That has to remain on the table until after the primary. Hopefully, that'll be in May, but we don't know that for sure. But whenever that is, and the voters approve that ordinance, then you would take it off the table at that time and vote on it in agreement with what the voters decide. So that will remain on the table until after the meeting after the primary, maybe even waiting till after we get the certified results. We can decide based on the outcome of the primary. Any questions about ordinance 22-3, which is on the table right now?
It's Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. More so just a procedural type question. Did I happen to hear you say the date of the primary isn't set yet?
Well, it is set, but I think there is some question that, you know, based on what I've read in the news about whether it might be changed based on the question of whether districts will change.
I'll be.
I think it's still up in the air. I don't know if anyone else has any better information, but I think we should just move forward on the assumption that it will be in May.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brent. So anyone have any questions for the law director? That's Councilman Jones. I can't hear you.
Just like old times.
Yeah, yeah, I missed this. We can't hear you. Still can't.
Do you have your volume up? Sometimes I shut mine off. Check your volume.
No.
Starting to believe this isn't a coincidence.
I swear I had nothing to do with this.
Not the worst thing that's ever happened, I tell you.
Oh, come on. I started it.
Ken, do you maybe want to try dialing in by phone? You can stay on video, but maybe your audio could be via phone. Okay. Does, while he's figuring out his audio issues, does anyone else have any questions for the law director?
Just to mention, I will be also serving as the acting clerk of council this evening. Ann's mother passed away this morning, and so be patient with me. I may not get everything just right like she would.
No worries, Brent.
I have Ken on the phone. That's not gonna work.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, through Danny's phone, I think.
Probably not worth going through all the efforts.
Yeah, that won't.
There should be, there should be an actual dial-in on the Zoom invite, Ken, that you can you can use that phone number as a dial-in. Let me see if I can find it and I'll put it in the chat for you.
Another option, Ken, if you have a black magic marker and a two-piece of paper, you can just have one that says yes and one that says no and all that.
Yeah, actually, I can't find the dial-in. You should probably just do that.
I have, like Riley Coyote.
I have the dial-in. I think it's the Zoom invitation, and there are a series of telephone numbers that you could use.
Yeah.
So I'll just give you the first one. Okay, Ken?
But then he'll need to enter that pin, Brent.
The webinar ID.
So if you.
Yeah, the webinar, webinar ID is 892-3856-4824. Mayor, does he need his participant ID?
That's what. No, that's just gonna give him the unique name. I can rename him if we need to, so that's okay. Pretty evil laugh, Councilman.
Can we both have the name or?
Well, I think if I get the name, I reserve the right to name him whatever I want, right?
Bubble head might be a good one.
Or Ken.
I can teach him how to do yes and no in sign language.
We, we just read that to you, Ken. Here, let me try to can I, Mayor, can you put it in the chat? There might be a chat that we can. I can't, I don't have access to the chat. It keeps saying question and answer.
Don't wonder if it's just his volume, because I always shut mine to zero. I'm not doing Zoom. If he's done that, or somebody else did that to the computer, it might just be the volume.
And I just emailed you the call-in information. I don't know, Bridget, it doesn't allow me to have a chat feature either. It just does question and answer, so.
Okay, and Ken, I just texted it to you. If that's quicker, you should just be able to click on that and it'll do everything for you.
Dial him in.
Why are we all so eerily quiet? I'm freaking out here.
We're always quiet.
No, we're not.
I did earlier.
Ah, okay.
Is he, did he come through in as a?
I believe that's Ken that we've got here.
Yeah, 618 should be him.
Yeah, so Ken, if you hit, I think it's star six, you should be able to talk.
Mayor, you may also be able to unmute him.
Unmute the phone, Ken.
Yeah, I've hit where it says ask to unmute, but it's not. He's gonna have to unmute himself. There you go.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, we hear you, Ken. Perfect, and it's seven o'clock.
There it is.
You timed this perfectly, didn't you?
No, this goes back to the last meeting when I said, does internet or Zoom go to Virginia? I guess I was only joking about that, but now I think y'all think I'm serious. Okay, I forget what the question was now. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, and Ken, because it is, we are at time here. Do you mind if we go over it during Brent's report? Because I think it was during, it was something that Brent had talked about during his.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
And that's what, that's what it was. It was, do we have time now or are we out of?
Yeah, can we wait until Brent's report?
Sure, yeah, sure thing, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Awesome. Okay, so, yep, so with that said, so I'm gonna call the Tiffin City Council meeting of March 21st, 2022 to order. And then vacation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, I just felt like, you know, there's so much evil going on in the world right now with the war and everything. I wanted to say a prayer that my family and myself say a lot to combat evils is how we look at it. So it's Saint Michael, the Archangel, defend us in battle, be our protection against the wickedness and snares of the devil. May God rebuke him, we humbly pray, and do thou, Prince of heavenly host, by the power of God, cast into hell Satan and all evil spirits who prowl about the world seeking the ruin of souls. Amen.
Now, if you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. Like that prayer. Um, at this time, I'm going to announce that clerk of council, Ann Forrest, will not be attending this evening. Therefore, I am appointing Law Director Brent Howard as the acting clerk for tonight's evening, tonight's meeting in accordance with Tiffin Codified Ordinance Section 123.02. With that said, I will ask for the clerk to call the role, please.
Councilmember Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Gillig?
Here.
Councilmember Yannatuno?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
From Missouri.
Councilmember Leopard?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
But the records show that seven of these seven council members are present. It's good to have everyone back, even though it's via Zoom. At this time, I would like to announce a public hearing. A public hearing with Tiffin City Council will be held Monday, March 21st at 7:00 PM for the consideration of ordinance 22-20. Ordinance responding to petition number 108, vacating an alley in Davis Estate Edition, running east from Oak Street in the second ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio. At this time, anyone wishing to address council may direct their questions to the council president. So anyone from the public. Mayor, if there's anyone who raises their hand, again, as a reminder, as we are via Zoom, if you can please press the raise hand button and we can address your questions.
Yep, so if we have anyone in the public that wishes to speak to council about ordinance 22-20, which is for the vacation of the alley in the Davis State Davis Estate Edition on Oak Street, now is the time to use the press hand button to raise your hand. I do not see any hands, Madam President.
Okay. Does any of the council members have any questions or comments regarding this? Uh, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Director Law Howard, motion, in motion to edit ordinance 2218 from west to east to east to west. I'm just asking, what is the difference? It's the same length. Maybe I'm nitpicking, but I don't understand why we need to change from west to east to east to west.
Yes, Law Director.
Yes, in the title, and this is only, the only changes in the title of the ordinance. The way the language is that it was running a direction from Oak Street. And if you look on the map to the ordinance, it should be running west from Oak Street. But we, I had inadvertently put east from Oak Street. So if you don't correct it, it would indicate that it's running the wrong direction from Oak Street. But this is an alley that runs west from Oak Street, so that's why it's important to make the change.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything regarding this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing regarding ordinance 22-20. Additionally, another public hearing announcement pursuant to section 4.09B of the Charter of the City of Tiffin. Notice is given that codification of ordinances has been proposed by the following. Ordinance 22-18, ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency. Final approval of said publication and codified codification by passage of ordinance 22-18 by Tiffin City Council will be considered no sooner than seven days after the date of this notice. In accordance with chapter 4.09B, a public hearing on these matters will be held Monday, March 21st, 2022 during the regular meeting of Tiffin City Council, which is being held via Zoom market, which is not being held in the council chambers on Market Street immediately after the public hearing for alley vacation ordinance 22-20 at 7:00 PM. At this time, is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments regarding, regarding this ordinance?
Again, if there's anyone in the public who wishes to address council on ordinance 22-18 about the replacement pages to the codified ordinances, now is the time to use the raise hand function. I do not see any hands, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from council has any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, at this time, I will close the public hearing regarding ordinance 22-18. Um, moving on to minutes, there were no minutes submitted for review and approval. So we should see those by next meeting, and that takes us to committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilman Leopard.
Report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilman Rhodes.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Perkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Yannatuno.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, does anyone see the need to have a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, seeing none, we will move into reports of the officers. His Honor, Mayor Aaron D. Monks.
All right, thank you, Madam President. First off, this evening, we have a proclamation for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, so I'm gonna let a few folks here in the room. Give me just a moment. Should be joining us here momentarily. We have Lou Hurst from the School of Opportunity, Trinity Les Collette from the School of Opportunity, and then Don and David, who I'm trying to get them in here to the room also. Hi, Trinity, we see you, and I see Lou in here, but it's not allowing Don and David in for some reason. Now, there they go. They'll just have to unmute themselves, okay? So, so to begin things here this evening, we have a proclamation for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, and I'm just going to read that. It's a mayoral proclamation. It states, whereas individuals with developmental disabilities, their families, neighbors, and coworkers encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all people. And whereas the most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each other's individual's contribution. Whereas policies must be developed, attitudes shaped, and opportunities offered for citizens with developmental disabilities to live as independently and productively as possible in our community. And whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for people with disabilities to include full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Aaron D. Monks, mayor of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And I recognize that people with developmental disabilities are an integral part to our community. Take the time to get to know someone with a disability and what he or she has to offer. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to take time to stand alongside the Opportunity Center to help improve the lives of persons with disabilities to form strong, diverse communities. This was done on the 21st day of March in the year of our Lord 2022. So we are very happy to declare this Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of Tiffin and throw our support behind the wonderful folks at the School of Opportunity and our other facilities here in the community. I know Don and David, Lou and Trinity have some details on a few events that they would like to share coming up. They would like to invite you, members of council, the administration, as well as the general public to attend some of the events that they have. So I'm not sure, Don and David, if you two are wanting to speak first, or if Lou or Trinity would, but the. or if Lou or Trinity would, but the floor is yours.
I'll go ahead and start and just say thanks, councilmen and women of Tiffin. Thank you for the proclamation. And, you know, on behalf of the Opportunity Center, thank you for your support over the years. We are an integral part of the community. We're excited that more and more folks with developmental disabilities are being employed throughout the Tiffin community, which is creating jobs, which then they're able to pay for rent and live in the community. So it is exciting to see the transformation that's happening. We, this year, over last year with COVID, we moved into the Optima Building, which was owned by Mercy Hospital. We're leasing that. We're looking to purchase that in the Cancer Center to create an adult day program there, which will create greater access for adults with disabilities for employment and for social recreational opportunities in that downtown area or the, by the market area. And then at some point, we like to find something downtown to open up downtown options for folks. So we are looking at moving folks into the community and then utilizing the building itself, the older building that we, has our main, been our main hub over the years as expanding the school. The growth in the children with developmental disabilities, specifically autism, has created a growing demand for an autism school. So we're hoping at some point to partner with the local school districts and the ESC to expand that to meet the needs of the community. So there's a lot of exciting things happening, a lot of exciting plans. But all that wouldn't be possible without the great support that we receive from Tiffin and the communities. I know we have John and Trinity. I don't know if you want to add anything. I think Dave is also on there.
Don and David maybe want to mention the events, if, if the technology is working, if you want to tell them about Palm Sunday or the celebrity basketball game, we'll give you a chance to tell them first.
Oh, okay, um, yeah, yeah, thank you. Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, dump dinner, um, about back come out. And I know that easy bunny kids, but it's something, but that, that came of easy bunny come and, and the kid, and the way, obey the easy bunny. And, um, basketball. Um, coming up soon sometime on March, DD, whether, um, I think, um, the back bug coming up and something else come up too. Okay.
I, I think you hit the highlights there. So just to make sure everyone has the date for that celebrity basketball game. It's next Thursday, March 31st at Heidelberg's Cyberling Gymnasium at 7:00. The doors will open at 6:00 though, so you can get a good seat. So we're looking forward to having everyone back for that. It's open to the public. It's free. And then he was also telling you about our Palm Sunday Dinner on April 10th. It's going to be a drive-through dinner again this year, and it's pre-orders only. So make sure that you, you call and get your dinner ordered, and that's $11 per meal. And if you have questions about any of the events or need more information or need to place your orders, you can just call us at the Opportunity Center, 419-447-7521. So I think Don and David hit the highlights. I don't know if Lou wants to add anything else?
Just also that we've been excited that over the last year, we've helped build about 12 independent businesses in Tiffin. And those are folks that are independent providers that go into individuals' homes. Our agency providers have really struggled to find staff. So we've, we've developed and helped people open their own businesses where they're working in billing the state as an independent business, which has created growth opportunities, but also met the demand of the need for individuals to go into individuals with developmental disabilities homes to help support them residentially with banking, food, cleaning the homes, and those kind of things. So we're excited to see that growth, and I think it's just a lot of good things are going on in the community. And I'm, we're glad to be part of it. We're also very proud of Tiffin. So thank you all for all of your hard work to drive our city. I know things are challenging, have been challenging with COVID, but a lot of good things are happening. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmen and women.
Thank you for joining us. We really appreciate it. And I'm sure we're all looking forward to seeing everyone during the celebrity basketball game. Councilman Jones, did you have something?
Yes, I did. Thank you for recognizing me. Don or David can answer this. Is Councilman Gillig or Mayor Mons part of the celebrity basketball team?
Uh, yes, basketball. Uh, yeah, good crowd out here. And good, um, basketball skirts be still, um, bye. And I, oh, you know what, oh, but had a good time.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Awesome.
Go ahead, Ben.
Uh, Councilman Jones, I am not playing. My wife is. If my voice, I'm hoping to co-announce with the gentleman that's been announcing this for quite some time. So hopefully my voice is back by then.
He's looking forward to it. I know that.
I will be there in the stands and support, Councilman Jones, but ever since my back surgery, I have, I've given up the days of playing basketball and football and baseball for fear of being back there again. But I'll be in the stands cheering for him.
Okay, good, good.
Are you playing?
No, I'll be out of state, so I can't.
We'll turn the tables on you. Well, Don and David, we appreciate you joining us and you also, Lou and Trinity. We really appreciate things. And I'm sure we'll see you at the celebrity basketball event. If you would like us to share information on that, just send it to us and we'll gladly post it on our social media as well to help encourage the public to attend. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Great.
Just need to, uh, let's see, get Trinity and Lou out of here so they don't have to stay on the screen the whole night. Yeah, let's see. All right, there, we're back. Okay, I'll get into the report. It's a little longer tonight since, as you all know, council or chief, Rob Chapel, the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division, was supposed to give his annual report tonight. He requested to move that. He would much rather do that in person. So his annual report now will be pushed back until the first meeting in June. So the Fire Rescue Division's report will be on June the 6th. With that, at the next meeting, we should have the Parks and Recreation Annual Report with Bryce Coon and his staff on April the 4th. Uh, to run through report items for this evening, finances for the month of March, we are down about 4% to the month or approximately $30,000 of revenue when you compare this month's month-to-date figures versus last year's total. However, for this year, even with the down month that we've had so far, we are still ahead of last year's figures year-to-date by about 14% or, or about $368,000 ahead of where we were last year at this time. So financially, the city's health looks very rosy. We will be completing the end of the first quarter here in the next about 10 days so that we'll have a good picture on where we stand at the end of Q1 in the very near future. We do want to let the public know that Bolt Pickup Week has been scheduled. So all of you, get out your pens, your pencils. Bolt Pickup Week will take place in Tiffin this year in June, the week of June the 6th. So June 6th through 10th of this year is our Bolt Pickup Week. We will be, Nick Nutro will be sending out a release tomorrow morning so that the public and media can pick up on that as well. But I'm sure if you're like us, we've already had many calls down here. You all with council have probably been asked about it. So Bolt Pickup Week, June 6th through 10th of 2022. I do want to let council know, since you approved us to do so, that the Board of Control has selected OHM to complete the Trails Master Plan and the design work for the Tiffin Trail System. You all approved that legislation a few meetings ago to allow the Board of Control to go out and do that. We did make the selection so that we will be moving forward with OHM. Kind of interesting, we found out through the process, there's a couple of folks with that company who actually have ties to Tiffin and grew up here. So we're pretty excited to have a company that is large and specializes in trail systems, one of which they recently completed the bicentennial trail that was put in for Columbus, Ohio, where their offices are located. So exciting to see that move forward so that we can continue to work on a trail system here through the community. We have formed a committee here at City Hall with some private individuals as well to begin work on looking to how we can improve the housing situation in the Tiffin community. I, we kind of joke, we, we have several realtors on this committee, and we had more realtors in the room than we had houses for sale on the market. So that's certainly a problem that we hear loud and clear in the Tiffin community, that we need houses from essentially starter homes all the way through the more pricey options. We also are in need of rental units. So this committee is going to start meeting regularly to try to come up with some solutions. We've actually been in touch with our state representatives, Gary Click and our state Senator Bill Reinecke, to discuss ways that the state could also help facilitate some of this. We're hearing more and more home builders that the margin is just not there for them to take, take the plunge to put in homes. So we're trying to get creative and figure out a way that we could spur some development for houses here in this community. So stay tuned for some updates. With that, the committee just began work. And we, we view it as being kind of a long haul, that it's not going to happen overnight. But we have to start somewhere to, to resolve this housing issue that we have in Tiffin. Speaking of housing units, I do want to let City Council and the public know that there are two very key meetings tomorrow. The first of which is the Architectural Board of Review, or excuse me, the first of which is the Zoning Board of Appeals at 3:00 PM. Immediately following that will be the Architectural Board of Review at 3:30 PM. The topic for those meetings is for them to discuss the development along the riverfront of Eduardo Hernando. Mr. Hernando, as you know, the contract with the city was null and void due to not meeting deadlines. However, he has a separate contract with a private individual along the riverfront, which he is planning to move forward with, with putting in multifamily housing units on that site. So the hearings for the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Architectural Board of Review are tomorrow at 3:00 and 3:30 here at City Hall. Those are open to the public. Any member of the public, city council, et cetera, is welcome to attend those hearings. And we, of course, will keep you abreast as far as how that progresses with that development or with that potential development on the riverfront. Uh, we're continuing to work along the city's bonding process. As many of you recall, we are moving forward with changing our notes over to long-term bonds for the Progress Parkway project that was completed a few years ago. From that project and putting in Progress Parkway Fair Lane, we already have secured the Willows, which is the trilogy facility, and also Dr. Chris Sears put a new medical facility on that site. There has been additional interest on the site. In fact, we're very hopeful that next year we may have a third development there. However, we are in the process of issuing long-term bonds for that roadway project. Things are, are starting to come to a head with that. We have our prep meeting on April the 19th. But then the big one, we will be going before the board at Moody's to have the city's credit rating reevaluated so that we'll have our credit rating updated. That is scheduled for April the 26th at 2:00 PM. We're hopeful that, of course, we're, we're almost certain that our credit rating will remain the same. We're hopeful that there's even a chance that it may improve due to the city's good financial standing where we currently are. Uh, the Architectural Board of Review approved last week the exterior renovations to the finance office. Those numbers were included in the city budget this year. The finance office has not been remodeled in approximately 40 years. They are going to undergo a complete remodel. And as part of that, they'll be brought into ADA compliance, which they currently did not meet. So the ABR did approve the changes. And we're excited. I think Kathy is especially excited, nervous and excited because her folks will be out of those offices for 90 to 120 days. So kudos to Kathy and the city administrator have been working at alternative locations. We're going to kind of scatter them throughout City Hall during the renovation period in order to have that move along as quickly as it can and also to keep costs down. But we're very happy that the ABR gave approval to those exterior changes because, as you, as you know, as you walk up to finance right now, there's kind of the sunken-in area where it goes into the door. That will all be brought out like, like really the building used to be where it was even with the sidewalk. And then the building itself will be connected to City Hall so that you will not have to go outside any longer, as well as being brought into ADA compliance and create privacy or take care of some privacy issues that we had in those offices. So that, that will begin soon after. A couple of projects from the engineers world to let you know where they're at. Curb ramp installation ahead of our street paving project for this year will begin the week of April the 11th. So it will be here before you know it. Street paving is likely to begin in the middle of June this year. And so that's a little ahead of schedule. Nature Trails Park in the second ward, construction is set to begin the week of April 18th. We're looking at about three to four week turnaround before that project is completed. We are working with the Chamber of Commerce to hold a ribbon cutting for the, the new, the park, since we're going to remodel everything, put in the little walking loop, new playground equipment, et cetera. So Councilman Jones, if you're in town, we would like you to be there since it's your ward. And we'd like you to say a few words if possible, as well as, we'll send out invitations to everyone. We'll probably be late May, Ken. We're going to wait until we, we have some more certainty in the deadlines and when it's finished. But we're excited to, to break ground and get that project completed in the second ward to give residents yet another beautiful park here in the city of Tiffin.
Yeah, good.
And then Parks has tentatively scheduled a groundbreaking for the all-inclusive playground structure at Hedges Boyer Park for August the 15th, with hopes that that could be completed by late September, early October. And if that was the case, we would do some sort of a ribbon cutting as well. As that, as we've mentioned, is going to be the largest playground facility the city of Tiffin has ever had. And, and perfect timing with this being declared Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, today being World Autism Day. And here we are talking about the, the groundbreaking for, or excuse me, today being World Down Syndrome Day, with today being the day that we're talking about the groundbreaking for our all-inclusive playground that's going to allow children and people of all ages and all mental different, mental abilities to be able to use this facility. So August 15th, we're looking at the groundbreaking, and then we'll have a ribbon cutting probably in late September, early October, when that's completed, as long as the weather cooperates. Just a couple of other items to let everyone know. Kudos to Nick in the Communications Office. He is partnering with CGI Communications. They're going to produce four free videos for us here at the city of Tiffin to help market the community and show off all of the good things that are happening in Tiffin. The videos are being done at no charge. We'll be able to feature these on our website and social media and just use it to really show off our community. So thank you to Nick. And then I also do want to let the City Council know that the city has retained the services of Squire Pat and Boggs for legal services as those services relate to the, the Mark Rep matter with the Tiffin Municipal Court. We will likely have an update for the City Council members at the April 18th meeting in regards to that. Several events coming up this coming Thursday, the 24th at 4:00 PM. A ribbon cutting is being held downtown for Bear Brothers for their new ownership. If any of you are available, stop down 4:00 PM, Bear Brothers Ribbon Cutting. Then the following day, Friday, the 25th, 6:00 PM, is the Tiffin Bicentennial Kickoff Event for, at the Ritz Theater. I'm delivering a proclamation. I know there are several other speakers talking about some of the history of Tiffin. The city of Tiffin itself is going to be presented with an 1822 flag. So it's a replica of the flag that used to fly in this country, the year that Tiffin was founded. That is at 6:00 PM on Friday, the 25th, at the Ritz Theater. It is open to the public, free of charge. Please come out and, and help us kick off a season of festivities as our city celebrates our 200th birthday. And then, as you already heard on the call from the wonderful folks at the School of Opportunity, Thursday, the 31st at 7:00 PM is the School of Opportunity Celebrity Basketball Game. And then last but not least, Saturday, the, and I believe 9:00 AM, Oakley Park Cleanup. The annual Oakley Park Cleanup takes off. So Saturday, the 2nd of April, Oakley Park Cleanup. That concludes my report, Madam President. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any questions for the mayor? Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Clerk of Council Ann Forrest, again, is absent this evening. Did she give you anything to report on?
No report.
Thank you. Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Ken, did you have any additional questions? Excuse me, Councilman Jones, did you have any additional questions for the law director that weren't able to be answered in committee of the whole? I'll take that as no. Okay. We are now under written communications.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-22-9. To amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds into the Fire and Parks Budgets.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 22-9 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 22-26.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-22-10 to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds into the Council Clerk and Parks Budgets.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 22-10 has been prepared for tonight's meeting as ordinance 22-29.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 22-9 to approve the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Mayor's Request for Legislation Number 22-9 will be forwarded to the Long Community Planning Committee.
And finally, a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Regarding the transfer of a liquor permit to Parkhurst Dining LLC, DBA Heidelberg University from. Eat and Park Hospitality Group Inc., DBA Heidelberg University.
This item will be forwarded to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee. Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Street Sidewalk and Sewers Committee authorizes the clerk to sign or return the transfer.
Do I need to take a vote on that? Okay, you're good.
Yeah, we'll just note that for the minutes of the meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Perkins.
Does that conclude your end communications?
It does.
Yep. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in and direct their questions to the council president. Mayor, do we have anyone?
If there is anyone here this evening who would like to speak to the City Council, ask questions, et cetera, now is the chance. For you to do so, please click the raise hand button and we can allow you to speak. I do not see any hands, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for ordinance 22-20 to be amended. With the correction of changing the word east to the word west.
There's a motion to amend ordinance 22-20 to change the wording from east to west. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, a second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries.
If I could.
Yes.
President, I think typically with an amendment regarding legislation, let's call for a roll call vote.
Okay, sure.
So Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard. Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion passes with a vote of seven to zero. Are there any other motions this evening? Yes, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move that our next council meeting, our next regular council meeting on April the 4th. Be moved to the Zoom platform.
Thank you. Councilman Gillig.
I would like to second that motion, Madam President.
Hey, there's a motion to move our next regularly scheduled council meeting to be held via Zoom and there's a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Jones.
I will second that motion, Madam President.
Ben, Councilman Gillig actually already seconded it. Just any, is there any discussion? No worries. Okay, and. Brent, am I taking a roll call on this vote or is that just a motion?
Um, we can do this just by motion and voice vote.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Are there any other motions this evening? Okay, that now takes us under resolutions and ordinances.
There are no resolutions this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And under ordinances, begin with ordinance number 22-18 introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-18, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 22-18.
There's a motion for passage of ordinance 22-18. Is there a second, Councilwoman Yanatuno?
A second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard. Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-18 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance 22-20 introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance responding to petition number 108, vacating an alley in Davis State Edition. Running west from Oak Street in the second ward of the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-20. Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like for, ask for passage of amended ordinance 22-20.
There's a motion for passage of ordinance 22-20. Is there a second, Councilman Jones?
I'd like to second that motion, Councilwoman President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-20 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-22 introduced by Councilmember Zach Perkins. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in a maximum principal amount not to exceed three, $3,250,000. For the purpose of improving Progress Parkway and Fair Lane between certain termini and adjacent city property. By grading, draining, curbing, paving, constructing sidewalks, curb ramps. Sanitary sewers, water lines and storm sewers and storm water detention basins. And installing and improving catch basins, fire hydrants, manholes. Street lighting and traffic signs and signals and signalization where necessary. In each case, together with the necessary appurtenances and work incidental thereto. Including certain related and required improvements to US Route 224. County Roads 1 and 54 and Township Road 18. And acquiring real estate and interest in real estate in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 22-22. Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for passage of ordinance 22-22.
There's a motion for passage of ordinance 22-22. Is there a second, Councilman Rhodes?
Yes, Madam President, I will second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Uh, yes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I could have, should have asked earlier, months and months ago, there was talk of. Having Fairlane go from, I think it's Euclid Avenue all the way out to. 224. Is that part of this $3,250,000? Bond or not?
Yes, Mayor.
No, Councilman Jones, so this is to take them, so we, we did, we did short-term financing until the project was completed. And now that all of the bills are paid, we're rolling this into a long-term note. That we will then pay a lower interest rate on now that we know exactly what we're, we're borrowing, whereas beforehand it was a shorter term note. Until we knew exactly what the total cost would be now that it's done. The plan is eventually for Fairlane to tie into. The other end of Fairlane and also to go all the way across to West Market Street. It's just that will not occur until a few more businesses go on that site so that we can see where exactly that site develops and how it does. It could be another five to 10 years before we see that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopards. Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-22 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-23 introduced by Councilmember Jones. Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to grant an easement from the city of Tiffin, Ohio. To the Protestant Episcopal Church known as Trinity Church. And also known as Old Trinity Church for an encroachment on city property at 125 East Market Street and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-23.
Ordinance number 22-26 introduced by Councilmember Stephen Leopard. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105. To appropriate $1,015 into the Fire Rescue Division Budget. For a training reimbursement grant and $2,000 into the Park and Recreation Budget for a NOPEC grant.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-26. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of the City Council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance number 22-26.
There's a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 22-26. Is there a second, Councilman Gillig?
I would like to second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. This is essentially a money in, money out situation. Grants that reimbursement grant for the fire and rescue and a NOPEC grant for the park and recreation. It simply gives them the opportunity to.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank NOPEC for their grant as well.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-26 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 22-27 introduced by Councilmember Stephen Leopard. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-27, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of the City Council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance number 22-27.
A motion to suspend. Council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 22-27. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, the 2022 budget needs to be amended in the American Rescue Plan Act by reducing or increasing. Property and equipment lines in various departments.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones.
Am I muted?
Nope.
Am I muted?
No.
Hang on. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can still hear you.
Okay. All right. We're under ordinance 22-27, correct?
Yep.
And I just had a note to myself. Again, this is the American Rescue Plan Act. I thought that was money coming in. And we're talking in this ordinance about reducing the sewer department line by. $1.6 million. Why would we reduce the sewer department line by 1.6 million when these extra funds are coming in? Confused.
Mayor.
Uh, yeah, because if you recall back when we passed the budget. We had to have a place to put these funds in a special account that they were not just dumped anywhere so that they were commingled with the rest of our funds. So we elected to put them in the sewer fund because that was the best place to where they could show up as its own separate line for the Rescue Plan Act dollars. Versus being deposited into the general fund where they potentially could have gotten lost or commingled with everything. So. By placing it in the special fund, we would ensure that it was only used for the ARPA type expenses. So that's why we're reducing it by 1.6 million because that's essentially that figure. So that makes sense to you.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will now vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gillig.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Uh, ordinance 22-27. Uh, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven, uh, passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eight introduced by Councilmember Stephen Leopard. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in, and I see I've made a mistake just now, I'm reading it. It should be in twenty-twenty-two. It says, though, twenty-twenty-one for the city administrator to competitively bid for the purchase of road salt and declaring an emergency. And I would add, ma- make a note that, uh, before you, um, uh, take any further action, you would amend the title to say awarded in twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I would ask that ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eight be amended to read twenty-twenty-two in the second line, not twenty-twenty-one.
There's a motion to amend ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight to read as twenty-twenty-two as opposed to twenty-twenty-one in the second line of the ordinance. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Madam President.
If there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I can't put my fingers on it, but I had a note to myself. Uh, ordinance twenty-two twenty-eight somewhere in there, I read. This has to be approved by the Board of Control. And who is the Board of Control? I guess I have no idea who that is and or my, not on the correct ordinance here. Maybe I can find it here. And I just need to know what I'm voting on here, but, uh, wait a minute, uh, contract sales, purchasing, department, some of that. Section three talks about upon receipt of bids, the city administrator directed to recommend the lowest and best bid to the Board of Control. And what's the Board of Control got to do with this, or who is the Board of Control?
Um, uh, Law Director.
Yes, um, I, if you recall, Councilmember, uh, Jones, um, yeah, in the charter review, we reviewed various sections of the charter, including section eight, and it deals with the contracting powers of the city. Section eight point zero two sets forth that it created a Board of Control consisting of the mayor, the city administrator, and the director of finance. Their responsibility then is to award all contracts on behalf of the city after going through a bidding process. So they, um, they review all bids and award contracts, uh, for the city.
Well, thank you. Your memory is much better than mine, so thank you for that explanation.
So there's a motion to, um, to amend ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Is there any other discussion? There are motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Um, Law Director, do I call, uh, do I, do we vote by roll call or by voice?
Uh, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Okay. You could please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
The motion to amend ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight passes with a vote of seven to zero. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of the City Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of amended ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-eight.
There's a motion to suspend, uh, the Council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of amended ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Is there a second? Councilman Rhodes.
Second motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-nine introduced by Councilmember Stephen Leopard. Ordinance amending twenty-twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one zero five to appropriate one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars into the council clerk budget and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars into the park and recreation budget and to correct an appropriation for the mayor's outstanding invoice in ordinance number twenty-two dash four, twenty-two dash twenty-four.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for the suspension of the City Council's three-reading rules and that passage of ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
There's a motion to suspend Council's three-reading rule and pass ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is, uh, uh, to pay for an invoice for the supplement, the ordinance supplements and, uh, also, uh, the Parks Department sponsorship of Thursday night dunes and also correction of funds.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion, Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is the first reading, and before we suspend the three-reading rule by adding, if I'm reading this ordinance correctly, by adding twelve hundred and, where is it? Twelve hundred and fifty dollars to the park and recreation budget. It's underlying item two four two point five one oh point fifty-four hundred. Contractual services for ninety-one thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars. What kind of contracts does the Parks Department get into that cost us ninety-one thousand dollars, I guess? Confused on that item.
Uh,
I guess I should have brought this up ahead of time, but this is the first reading and it's right in front of us, so.
Council, Councilman Leopard, give your hand raise.
The ninety-one thousand, the ninety-one thousand dollars was the new total. We're just adding twelve hundred and fifty dollars. With the new total being ninety-one thousand one forty-two eighty-eight.
Director of Finance.
Yeah, I would just add that we are only adding twelve hundred and fifty dollars and that fifty-four hundred is the whole area in the budget. So there are several budget lines in there and just adding the twelve hundred and fifty dollars, that ninety-one thousand is the new total for that whole section.
Okay, thank you all.
Hey, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Gilligan.
Yes.
Councilmember Yanatuno.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Leopard.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-nine passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinances.
Thank you. We are now under other businesses. Is there any other business? For council, yes, Councilman Le- or excuse me, feel like, sorry, I have been saying that over and over again.
The nicest thing anyone's ever said about me. So, I just wanted to, uh, thank Mayor Montz for his statement of regarding the situations at Tiffin City Schools and the need for Tiffin to really support the community. Just this afternoon, I was walking with my two boys who are six and four, and they were super cute and cutting through yards and, and it was wonderful to see, but I just thought, you know, if my sons were teenagers or middle-school-aged kids, would the reception have been that welcome? And I just kind of wanted to remind the public that even though they look like many adults, you know, if you look on, uh, the, uh, on, uh, social media, you'll see these pictures and they're, and they're all so strong and just doing amazing things. They're still kids. I will ask them what their favorite TV show is, and they will look me dead in the eye and say Paw Patrol. So just something to keep in mind, uh, they've endured so much, uh, in the last few years, so much trauma. And I really just want to encourage the public, especially, um, the adults in the community to just really show them as much love and compassion as we possibly can, uh, because this trauma will stick with them and we will have an epidemic of all sorts of problems in the very near future if we don't take some steps now. So I wanted to thank the mayor for his wonderful statement.
Thank you, Councilman Gilligan. Uh, yes, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, two items. Uh, I think Mr. Swartz had, uh, uh, Q and A, and, uh, I believe he was thanking City Council, uh, for the passage of the Davis Street ordinance. And, uh, item number two is I need to schedule a meeting with Long Community, Community Plan concerning, uh, mayor's request for legislation twenty-two oh nine. Uh, early next week, sound good to Ben and Dan?
Councilman Leopard, I've been rather forcefully told I'm off work till after spring break, so anytime that works for you is great.
Okay, Dan?
Yeah, anytime. Are we, uh, thinking, um, using Zoom or would you want to do it in person or?
Is big mics open yet?
Soon, soon.
Are you able to, uh, attend, uh, in-person meetings, Ben?
Uh, yes, I am. I, depending on how I feel, I might have to get a ride, but I should be good.
Let me know, uh, if you can, maybe join my phone.
Okay.
Uh, about, uh, next Monday at four o'clock? Will that work for you, Dan?
Um, if we could do four thirty, that'd probably be better.
Uh, Ben, four thirty, good?
Perfect.
Okay. I'd like to call along Community Planning Meeting, uh, for March twenty-eighth, four thirty P M. City Council Chambers, City Council Committee Room, uh, for the purpose of mayor's request for legislation twenty-two oh nine, Tax and Study Review Council Recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Leopard. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Okay, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate your time and have a safe, have a safe evening. Guys, we, we stand adjourned.
Yes.